Do we have hard copy packets, any place?
Uh, there's the one in the back of the room for the public.
That's what he was just looking at. Is it a whole packet or just the agenda?
Should be a whole packet.
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Thank you all for being here. Calling the meeting to order, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilman Benson?
Here.
Councilman McAldonny?
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
And Councilman Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone will please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if the staff will go around and pass the microphone around, we'll introduce the audience.
Hi, I'm Sean, I'm with South Adams County Fire Department.
Ron Lepen, South Adams County Fire Department.
John Lipinski, E-470 Public Highway Authority.
Debra Bolot, Commerce City Historical Society and Our Savior Lutheran Church.
Carol Haar, Our Savior Lutheran Church.
Reverend Victor Young, pastor-elect of Our Savior Lutheran Church.
Debbie Young, Our Savior Lutheran Church.
Preston Gibson, Excel Energy.
Cheryl Dietrich, Excel Energy.
Danny Thomas?
Betty Thomas.
Pam Sfrattler?
Raven Newman?
Adira?
Georgia?
David Arslava?
Samari Bowman?
June?
Annoe O'Concey, Montbello Drumline and Noel Boys and Girls Club at Montbello High School.
Delilah Collins, Quality Community Foundation.
Carol Tanner Boyd, Quality Community Foundation.
Valerie Madina, Quality Community Foundation.
Ron Jackson, Model T Ford Club?
Paulette Jackson, Model T Ford Club Mile High Chapter.
Dana Smith, 1001?
Cameron?
Jasmine?
Naira?
Brian?
Alejandro, Montbello Drumline?
Miguel?
Victor Calderon, Captain, 1001?
Edgar Tolwar, Base Captain, Montbello Drumline?
Lucky McGregor, Montbello Drumline?
Riazumir, SunCore Energy?
Gary White, SunCore Energy?
Margie Zimmerman?
Michelle Attinger, Detour Derby?
Teresa Newer, Detour Derby?
Love Deep Seem?
Jasper Tsing?
Kate Kramer, Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership?
Slavain Goigno, SunCore Energy?
Michael Moore, SunCore Energy?
Greg Fletcher, SunCore Energy?
Matt Lindstrom, SunCore Energy?
Dave Haskin with Rampart Search and Rescue for Adams County?
Lee Anne Noel, City of Commerce City?
John Howard, Information Technology?
Lisa Burnett, SunCore Energy?
Habigal Jimenez?
Esperanza Hernandez?
Adriana Jimenez?
Alma Jimenez?
Sam Jimenez?
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources?
Troy Smith, Police Chief?
Steve Timms, Planning Division?
Jerry Draper, City Planner?
Sarah Preeth, Run Dave?
Gudindarun Dave?
He Tu Pamar?
Yellen Bedoit, Mile High Hook and Ladder?
Las Bedoit, Mile Hook, High Hook and Ladder?
Cheryl Carstens, Finance Department?
Chris Kramer, Community Development?
Bill Conway?
Dixie Conway?
Barbara Gallagher?
John Gallagher, SunCore Energy?
Karen Fitzgerald?
John Fitzgerald, Foothills Young Marines?
Rob Chatter, Foothills Young Marines, Executive Officer?
Bob Gurley, United States Submarine Veterans, a Commerce City resident. Last year was one of the honorary parade marshals in the Memorial Day Parade, and this year we're here to receive one of the awards for the Memorial Day Parade, and he's our parade chairman.
Richard Myers, Rocky Mountain Base of the United States Submarine Veterans?
Art Gallegos, Rocky Mountain Chapter, ASAC and Airborne Division Association? Jose Awia, Chairman, Rocky Mountain Chapter, 82nd Airborne Division Association?
Mike Connor, Public Works?
Maria DeAndre, Public Works? Michelle Halsted, City Manager's Office?
Great. Again, I'll tell you, thank you for being here, and the first item on our agenda is the Memorial Parade Awards. I want to thank all the people that participated in the parade this year. It was an outstanding performance by all, and I would ask you all to keep in mind, as you receive these awards, why we put this together and why we have it is for those people who have fought for our freedoms, and that's the important part of the parade. I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you all won awards, but treat the award with dignity because it does, you know, it's part of that freedom, and I'm glad that Commerce City has the Memorial Day Parade that we have to honor those who fought so hard to keep our freedoms. So with that, I would like to ask Michelle Halsted to come up, and I would like to ask the city council to come down to the podium so that we can recognize the award recipients as they come up so that we don't end up with congestion up here.
Mayor, before you do that, I just want to walk through just a few slides and then invite you to come down. So, just a little bit about this year's parade, it was our golden anniversary. As many of you know, the Commerce City Memorial Day Parade is the largest in Colorado, and this year we had well over 140 entries. We still had people coming up the day of to actually honor our veterans. We had three grand marshals this year, Mr. Gene Bailey, who served in World War II, Albert Cordova from Korea, and Joe Golden from Vietnam. You know, a parade of this magnitude doesn't happen without many volunteers, and I just want to take a moment to thank the parade committee led by Councilmen Steve Douglas and Councilwoman Crystal Elliott. They did a phenomenal job representing city council, along with all of the staff that you see on the screen, from the police department to information technology, public works, parks and rec, the city manager's office, many, many people come together. But the parade committee is really just the tip of the iceberg of how we do this, and I'm going to show you, we had well over 65 volunteers who worked to make this parade. Again, public works and parks and recreation, they start very, very early and sometimes the couple days before. We also had numerous police officers who staffed the parade and made sure people remained safe, and also our explorers had an opportunity to get some real-world practical experience. So, if we could just do a round of applause for all of the volunteers and city staff? One more slide, but that's okay. Well, again, a lot of folks who made a difference. We also had award judges, and every year we have some great volunteers, some of these folks have done judging of our awards for, gosh, at least 30 years if not more. And these folks are the ones outside of city council, and thank you Councilwoman Elliott for leading the charge on the council judging, are the ones who ultimately selected our award winners tonight. So what I'd like to start with, and I'm going to flip around here, is our overall awards. And what I'd like to do, these are our trophies, so if you're on this list as we call you up, we'd like you to come up. My colleague Maria DeAndre from Public Works will be presenting you the trophy, and then council members, if you can come down at this time, we can go from there. So, the first award is the council choice, and that is our Rocky Mountain Base US Submarine Veterans. So if you could all come up and give them a round of applause. Richard and Bob, if you guys want to, if you guys want to head to here, we'll get a picture of you all. For the, for the big trophies, yeah, we'll start, we'll get them, get them posing. Why don't you stand right there? Everyone look at Robert? Thank you. That one, you didn't have the trophy in your face. Great. Thank you. So that was our council choice award. The next two trophies, we have most creative, the Promenade Horsemanship Academy, they're not able to join us today, but let's give them a round of applause, they were most creative. And then the best of the parade was the Retired Enlisted Association. Is anyone here from the Retired Enlisted Association today? All right, let's give them a round of applause also. So next we have seven categories that we give awards in, and what we'll do, what I'll ask is I'll do each category, so if you're in the category, please come up and we'll take one picture with all three category winners. So first is antique cars. So first place was the Model T Club Mile High Chapter? Second place was Bill Conway? And third place was Ron's Collision and Custom? So Bill, why don't you hop up there? Thank you. Thank you again. Next we have the classic car category. First place in the classic car category was the Military Vehicle Collectors? Second place was Ms. Colorado Senior America Pageant? And third place was our submarine group, Rocky Mountain Base US Submarine Veterans? You know the routine by now, right? Okay. Motorized, no, motorized unit. First off was the South Adams County Fire Department, first place in the motorized unit. And second place was the Colorado Old Iron Association. Those are the tractors. Next is our float category. First place would be Our Savior Lutheran Church? And I know our second place is here, that's the 82nd Airborne Division. And third place is VFW Post 4444. Now, I believe I saw a gentleman from the Colorado Old Iron Association, if you would mind coming up, and acknowledge him for the motorized unit second place. Next we have the horses, and I don't think any of them are here, but let's acknowledge our first place in the horse category was the Western Airs. horse category was the Western Airs. Second place, second place was the Lakewood Riding Club. And third place was the Adams County Sheriff. Okay, next, we have our walking and marching categories. And I know that we have two groups here at least. The first is the Montebello Drum Line. I didn't tell them to bring them. And second place went to the Foothills Young Marines. And I know we have the commanding officer and the executive officer here. And last but not least, we have our unique entry category. First place goes to the Detour Derby, our roller derby folk. Second place goes to the Mile High Hook and Ladder. Thank you, Les and Ellen, for being here. So those are all the awards that we have for our Memorial Day Parade. And while council is returning, why don't we do another round of applause for all of
Thank you again. So any of you that got an award that would like to leave, you're more than welcome to I would like to see if next time, we can maybe, maybe not next time for the parade awards, but to get the drum line to come in here. And just so everybody knows, Michael Hancock's son, Mayor of Denver, is part of the drum line, was here tonight. So I happened to have the chance while everybody was leaving, I figured I'd tell you. When I was in Japan with Michael Hancock, the drum line was out there at the embassy and gave a performance. And they're one of the best in the nation as far as drum lines. So really pretty spectacular to see.
They were good at the parade.
Yeah, they were very good at the parade. All right. Seeing as that everybody that has wanted to leave has left, we'll move on with the agenda. Next item is the Quality Community Foundation Scholarship Recognition. And I'd like to invite the foundation members forward to make the presentation. Good evening. Glad, glad that you're here today.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. We're here to recognize our two scholarship recipients. And we have Navdeep Singh, who graduated from Prairie View High School and will attend CU Boulder studying innovative physiology to become a pediatrician. And we also have Abigail Jimenez, who graduated from Adams City High School and will attend Metro State studying biology to become an oral surgeon. So we'd like to bring those two grant recipients up.
Next item on the agenda is the recognition of John Gallagher. I'd like to invite John and his wife Barbara up to the podium, please. After decades of service, John Gallagher, Vice President of Refining with Suncor, retired today. John spent nearly six years leading Suncor's operations in Commerce City. During his tenure, John has been a valued partner with the city, supporting our senior programs, serving on advisory committees, serving residents at neighborhood outreach events, and more recently, paving the way for our new Boys and Girls Club. John has always been an advocate for our community, providing honest communications, ethical leadership, and meaningful investments. Tonight, we thank you for your leadership on behalf of City Council and the City of Commerce City. And I will be down with the council to give you a token of our appreciation for all your contributions to our community. Thank you very much, John. You've been a great partner to this community.
I would very much like to thank the leadership of Commerce City. You guys are great leaders, do a wonderful job. You know, I think even the evidence of thanking the parade individuals who are involved in that, I mean, that shows tremendous acknowledgement and leadership. And you guys are really at the top of your game. I would like to just acknowledge that I'm accepting this award and I appreciate it greatly. I'm accepting it on behalf of Suncor, who are a proud community partner with Commerce City. We believe that it's important for us to be involved in the communities that we work in. And it's really been an honor and a pleasure to work with you guys. It's heartwarming.
We're moving into the citizen communication portion of the meeting. And we do have four people signed up. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. You have three minutes to address the city council. And I'll need you to state your name and address for the record. Start with Carol Har and Reverend Victor Young. Both come up together.
My name is Carol Har. I live at 16668 East 106th Drive in Commerce City. I am the president of Our Savior Lutheran Church here in Commerce City. And the church is celebrating its 60th anniversary this year. And that's going to be on August the 10th. And there will be a big celebration there. And of course, the council is invited to join us on that, on that particular day. I'm pleased to introduce to you the Reverend Victor Young, and he's our new pastor. In fact, he's going to be installed this coming Sunday. And again, you're invited to join us on June the 8th at 3:00, when we will be installing Pastor Young. And I'm going to let him do the rest of the talking.
Great, thank you.
I think he said it all. I'm at 6790 Monaco Street, by the way. It's a joy and a privilege for my wife Debbie and myself to come to the community of Commerce City. My wife Debbie is a native of Denver, and she's overjoyed to be back home, close to family. And of course, it's wonderful to be in Colorado in this wonderful environment, and of course, to serve our Lord and the people of Commerce City as well. So you're able to come this Sunday at 3:00. Love to see you at Our Savior.
Well, very nice to meet you and welcome to the community. And if I knew we had a reverend in the house, I would have had an invocation instead of a moment of silence. But next time you come in, we'll, we'll make sure that we get an invocation.
Be glad to do that.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the community.
Thank you.
Oh, it's on the agenda, okay.
Yes, that is on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, it's the annexations. Yeah, you don't need to sign up for citizen communication.
I thought it was an attendant.
You'll get a chance here in a little bit. But thanks for making sure that we acknowledge you one way or the other. You're going to get to talk. Chuck McCleskey. Chuck, is Chuck here? John. She wrote it down as Chuck is what I have as here is Chuck. But John, from E470.
Right. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm with E470, but tonight, I'm actually representing the E470 Transportation Safety Foundation, which is a separate organization. It's a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. And members of the board of the E470 Authority do not sit on that foundation board. So even though Councilman Benson and Councilman Douglas are regular attendees, they didn't have any choice in who we awarded funds to this year. I might add that all the funding for our Transportation Safety Foundation comes from donations. None of it is toll-related monies, so it's all kept separate. So we're not handing out toll money on our foundation awards. The purpose of the foundation is to promote transportation safety for children and teens and young adults. And this year, we had about 15 requests for funding for our grants. We were only able to award about eight of them. Some of the other examples this year were for Aurora Drivers Training, where about 40 teens that couldn't otherwise afford to take drivers' training will be able to do it. In Littleton, we provided safety brakes for drivers' training vehicles. We gave some funds to the Children's Hospital for low birth weight child seats. And also, the Adams County Rampart Range also received a grant this year. So along with those, and also, we do after-prom party donations and live at 25 classes. But we're really pleased to be able to fund a day at the Commerce City Police Department Program this year for ages four through 15. So I'm very pleased. I have a check for you, and I know it's later on your agenda when you're going to actually acknowledge it.
That's all right. We don't want to make you wait.
But I'll be glad to give it to you right now.
You know what? Anytime someone brings a check, we're going to accept it at any time. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They're presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are two items listed under the consent agenda. Does any of the council members wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. McAdonny?
No.
All right. If not, then I'm open for a motion, Mr. McAdonny.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Will the attorney please read the titles?
Mr. Mayor, you have two items on your consent agenda this evening. The first is Resolution 2014-64, Resolution Approving Change Order Number Three to Agreement Between the City of Commerce City and ZACDirt Incorporated for East 104th Avenue Improvement Project Phase 3B. Second resolution on your consent agenda is Resolution 2014-65, Resolution Approving Agreement Between the City of Commerce City and Suncor Energy USA Pipeline Company for Relocation of a Crude Oil Pipeline and Reimbursement Therefore.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second. Title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show the consent agenda has been approved unanimously this evening. Now we'll move into public hearings tonight. We have eight public hearings on the agenda. Some of them are interrelated and will be heard together. Others will not be. We start with the JAG Grant. I'd invite the chief forward to explain the application and process. The JAG Grant is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The JAG Grant is an annual justice assistance grant. And this is a formula grant based on our population. And every year, in order for us to receive this award, we have to fill out an application, number one. And part of that application process requires a public hearing. If any citizen has any comment about either the funding or what we're using the funding for. for, they would have an opportunity to provide this council comment on that. This year, the police department will be awarded funds for the purposes of our TASER program, and in the amount of $16,923. We intend, if we receive that award, to apply that to continuing to purchase TASER equipment so that each one of our officers, uniformed officers in the field, including our animal control agents and our community service officers, would be equipped with a department-purchased TASER. And over the many years that the departments used the TASER, what we have found is that its application reduces injuries both to suspects and to employees. And as a result of that, I'd recommend, one, that you have a public hearing tonight offering a comment, and, number two, that you would approve the resolution for the grant.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Is there any questions from the council at this time for the chief? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir, Chief. How much does each TASER cost?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's my desire to move the department to the type of TASER that has a camera equipped in the device, and so that each application of the TASER would be captured on videotape. And that TASER is much more expensive than the TASER that we have been deploying with our current inventory. And so the cost of the TASER varies depending on whether or not it has this camera attached. They're about $1,300 with the camera, and they're about $800 without the camera.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for the chief from the council? Councilman Carson?
Chief, can you tell me what the life of a TASER is?
The manufacturer recommends five years.
Five years?
Yes.
And do the majority of our officers, are they, do we have enough that the majority have one?
We do not.
We do not.
And some of our officers, in fact, purchase their own TASERS and are using them, and I'm trying to get us to where the department issues each officer that piece of equipment. We had a line item in our budget last year, and that was removed, and so we're wanting to use this grant funding for the purposes of augmenting that equipment budget.
Okay, sounds great to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on the JAG grant that the chief has explained? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now, I need a, I'm open for a motion. Councilman Carson?
I've moved to accept 14798, 2014.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Just a point of clarification. You accepted the presentation. A resolution will come at a later date.
Okay, so we don't need to, so we don't need to take action on this tonight?
That's right.
Great, so we did have the public hearing?
Yep.
It's just odd to have a public hearing and not take action, so thanks for the clarification, Chief. It looks like you're all right. We'll see what happens when you bring the resolution forward.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into the next set of public hearings, which is Public Service Company
Annexation and Zoning. I'll invite the staff up to make their presentation and open the public hearing. And then I have all these questions that the attorney has to ask. So staff can make the presentation, and we'll go to the attorney.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. We do have several cases tonight. We have three annexations and one zoning that will be heard concurrently. And this is a request from Public Service Company of Colorado. It's an annexation and a zone change from unincorporated Adams County and Commerce City Agricultural to Commerce City PUD. So we have two parcels tonight that is the subject of this application. And the first parcel, this one's located on the, just south of 104th Avenue. The boundaries are Potomac on the west and Chambers on the east. This particular parcel here, you'll see it's all crosshatched. There's a little piece here between Potomac and Blackhawk that is going to be annexed and zoned, but then this whole piece here is all going to be zoned. And this part in green has already been incorporated. It's zoned agricultural in the city. It's about 25 acres totally, six acres to be annexed as part of this application. Parcel number two is located out by the airport. This is, again, just south of 104th Avenue, is right here. E-470 is to the west. Future Himalaya alignment is immediately to the west, and this is about eight and a half acres of currently unincorporated Adams County. So the comprehensive plan does call this area out to be utility corridor, and you'll see that here on parcel one, and you'll see that here on parcel two. This is an aerial of parcel one, showing you the approximate location. Again, this is Potomac, and then Chambers is over here. The area that's currently unincorporated is this little sliver right here. And then parcel two, you see nothing's out here, but this is right here in the middle of all this dry wheat fields. These are pictures. This is looking from the Potomac Street alignment, looking east. This is looking west, on the other side of Potomac. And this is parcel two. These are some of the common power lines out there, looking east, and then this is looking west towards the skyline of Denver. So a little history on this particular property. These properties were acquired back in the early 1960s by Public Service Company. They were purchased to construct the electrical transmission lines. Those lines were constructed in the mid-1960s and have been in place ever since. So the parcel number one, the one that we talked about between Potomac and Chambers, that was annexed and zoned, majority of it was annexed and zoned back in 1989. Staff was unable to locate why the entire parcel was not annexed and zoned at that time, but the majority of it was. And then back in 2012, city council had an application before them for the Excel Energy Natural Gas Pipeline Conditional Use Permit. One of the approval conditions on that permit was for the city and Public Service or Excel to work together to annex and zone the last two remaining parcels of the transmission lines. And so everything else along that corridor has already been annexed into the city. These are the last two parcels that are currently unincorporated. So a little bit about the process. There are three annexation cases for these parcels tonight. They are being held, processed concurrently with the rezoning. According to our Land Development Code, the annexations only go before city council. Planning Commission does not hear annexation cases. However, the Planning Commission and city council do hear the zoning cases, and they're treated like they would any other zoning application. So the case tonight does involve the annexation and a rezoning to PUD or planned unit development. And the applicants request to rezone these properties to planned unit development. Basically, their request is that, you know what? This land's already been developed with electrical transmission lines. There's no future development plan for these. No straight zone district within Commerce City, no agricultural, no public, no industrial, anything like that would allow the current transmission lines to be rebuilt as is. So they're basically illegal, non-conforming use. The PUD process did allow the applicant and the city to work together to meet the needs of both parties. And so over the past year and a half, the city and Public Service, Excel, have worked very closely to create, if you will, a good, I think, team effort on this PUD to enable both goals of the city and the applicant to be met. So like I said before, there's no immediate plans for any other rezoning along their corridor. That's a business decision on their part, and no future development is anticipated for these two particular parcels. The annexation maps were included within your packets. These are just summaries of the actual vicinity maps, and you'll see that annexation 227, excuse me, is the piece by Potomac. 228 and 229 are the eastern parcel. There's two of them so that we could capture the continuity requirements required by the state. Annexation criteria identified for the parcels, they are in compliance with state laws and the Land Development Code. It is in the best interest of the city to, would be served by incorporating these two parcels. They are within the municipal service area of the city. They are capable of being integrated into the city with compliance with all applicable regulations, and the configuration will not limit the city's ability to annex surrounding The criteria for zoning of newly annexed lands shall meet the minimum one of the criteria described in the Land Development Code, and the Planning Commission did find that the subject property and the requested zoning meets a criteria which is conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. As alluded to earlier, it is a utility corridor. It is called to be out to be a utility corridor. That is how the PUD is set up. A little bit of the goals. I did reference that it was a partnership of the city and Public Service, Excel, worked together. Couple of the goals that Public Service had was to enable and legally permit the utility corridor, which has been in place for about 50 years in this area, to ensure safe and uninterrupted energy and electrical transmission, both for the region and also for Commerce City. And then to work with one jurisdiction rather than two, including unincorporated Adams County, it just creates ease for process and regulation. For Commerce City, it does bring the entire utility corridor under city control and regulation. We do have a future regional trail identified in this corridor, and so it does allow the city and parks planning to work with Excel and Public Service directly rather than having to also get the county involved. And then it also does provide protection for the city. Any additional electrical transmission lines within this corridor would require a conditional use process, would come before city council for their approval. So the PUD zoning process does traditionally consist of three steps, a concept schematic, the zone document, and the PUD permit. Since this site is already developed and no future construction is envisioned, the applicant is going right to the PUD zone document. And the PUD zone document does establish the legal entitlements to a property, what can be done there, where it can be built, what it will look like, et cetera. So this particular PUD zone document does have three sheets. The first sheet is the vicinity maps, the signature blocks, the project purpose. The second sheet does describe the legal description for the western parcel and what's occurring there in an as-built survey. The third sheet has the legal description, the as-built survey for the eastern parcel, and also describes the allowed use, the bulk standards, other general notes applicable to this zoning. In terms of the uses, the proposed uses are typical of utility corridors, including electrical, gas, and other power, transmission, and distribution facilities. Telecommunication towers are allowed as a co-location facility by right. There are some existing grazing leases that are in place, especially along the western parcels. Those are allowed to continue. If for some reason those are abandoned, then they would be allowed in the future with a conditional use permit approved by city council. Certain uses are not allowed in this particular parcels, including power plants, substations, and anything not under the regulatory authority of the Public Utility Commission. And then, as I referenced earlier, the existing transmission line is a use by right. Any new transmission lines would be allowed through a conditional use permit. In terms of the bulk standards, most of those are regulated by the PUC. However, the zoning does talk about bulk standards as regards to setbacks in height. The maximum height allowed for these towers is proposed to be 200 feet. That number was checked with DIA. That will not interfere with DIA operations or the FAA. Then I already did a reference as well, the future regional trail under this entire corridor. This PUD gives the authorization to work with the property owner to establish that regional trail in the future. There is no timeline, though, currently established for that regional trail. So the analysis from Planning Commission, this is a legal, non-conforming use that's been in place for 50-plus years. It does conform to the current comprehensive plan. It does meet the approval criteria for a zone change. The rezoning would allow the non-conforming to become legal and conforming. We receive no objections to our service providers, the fire district, the water district, and DIA. This does have the ability to have all the parcels within this corridor under city regulation and control, and does meet the requirements and the condition of the previous conditional use permit. In terms of public notification, as of today, staff did receive one response to the public notice. The citizen did initially express displeasure about the rezoning, did not want to lose their agricultural property. They had one of those lease, grazing leases on it. Staff reached out to them. Public Service also reached out to them, explained that their existing grazing lease would not go away, in fact, could continue, and then that seemed to give the citizen assurance that they needed. So that was good news. So the Planning Commission did meet on May 6th. They did recommend five to zero to recommend approval of the PUD zoning. And then, of course, the development review team does recommend approval of the three annexation requests that you have before you as well. And that concludes my presentation at this time, and I'll be happy to answer questions on it.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions of the staff at this time from the council concerning the annexations?
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you very much. Now, this is for the 24-inch high-pressure gas line, correct, for that corridor?
Really, that gas line was approved through that conditional use permit. This is really for the above-ground transmission lines, although technically, it does allow for the natural gas pipeline as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to come up and add to the presentation given by staff. Good evening, Preston. Glad to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I can tell you, I'm glad that all those folks in the audience weren't here to oppose my case this evening. You never know when you come to a public hearing what's going to happen.
Yeah, it kind of scared you when you got here, huh?
It kind of does a little bit. But anyway, I wanted to thank you for hearing this request this evening. I wanted to thank staff for their recommendation and all of their work. Steve Thames has been just terrific to work with, and as he said, it's been a fairly lengthy process. But essentially, what we're doing tonight is we are here to follow through with our commitment. Our commitment was that we would annex and rezone these pieces of property as a condition of approval for the pipeline that you approved about two years ago, and that's why we're here this evening. I think he did, Steve did an excellent job in presenting the case tonight. I don't think I have really anything else to offer. I would say that we have Cheryl Dietrich here in the audience, who actually came up here and said she probably wasn't going to speak as part of the audience, but she's done all of our right-of-way acquisitions. She and her team are Easement Acquisition. We've got Carolyn White with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, and we also have John McDonald at Tetra Tech. So they can answer any questions that I'm sure I might not be able to answer, but we do appreciate your time this evening. And this all has to do with the Clean Air Clean Jobs Act and following through with our commitment also to clean the air in this region. And we're doing a pretty good job of it, actually. We've, I think, our carbon reductions thus far since 2005 have been about 21% from Excel Energy, and we're moving up to, I think, over 30% here in the next five years or so. But anyway, we appreciate your time this evening, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions from the council to the applicant at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in this, these three or, three cases of annexation? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. You need to testify?
I need Mr. Thames to testify.
You need to ask these questions, right?
Yes, I do.
But not as part of the public hearing, right? It's after the public hearing.
It's actually part of the public hearing.
Part of the public hearing.
Yes, it is.
See, this is the first time this has ever been put together this way for me, but that's all right. All right, so I won't close the public hearing. I'll leave the public hearing open, and I'll ask Attorney Stevens to proceed with her questions of staff.
All right. Mr. Thames, for purposes of your testimony, I'd ask that you be sworn. So will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you, has the city council adopted a plan which will govern the properties proposed to be annexed?
Yes, they have.
Is at least one-sixth of the perimeter of each of the areas proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the City of Commerce City?
Yes, they are.
Will any land held in identical ownership be separated or divided by these annexations without the written consent of the owner?
No.
Is any land that is 20 acres or more in size and which has an assessed value in excess of $200,000 for ad verum tax purposes been included within the territory proposed to be annexed without the written consent of the landowner?
No.
Have any other municipalities commenced annexation proceedings on the properties?
No.
Will the proposed annexation result in the detachment of any area from any school district?
No.
Mr. Mayor, those are all the questions that I have.
Thank you. Now I'll close the public hearing. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the resolution making findings a fact of annexation AN 227-14. Mr. McAdonie? Mr. McAdams?
I would move to approve or accept the facts and findings within AN-227-14.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I need to get a backup. I need the title from Karen. This is just odd for me. So bear with me, this is not a normal thing.
It's odd for me, too.
All right.
All right.
We're both in a learning curve then, so go ahead and read the title.
Okay. Resolution 2014-67, resolution making findings of fact by the city council of the city of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the city of Commerce City of the property commonly known as parcel 1723-00000075, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-227-14.
Thank you, and the city council voted yes unanimously. Now we'll move on. I need motion to introduce the annexation ordinance AN 227-14. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance AN 227-14.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Seconded.
A motion and a second with the city attorney. Please read the title of that ordinance.
An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, commonly known as parcel 1723-00000075, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that it's unanimously passed by the city council for introduction of ordinance AN 227-14. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the resolution making findings of fact on annexation AN-228-14. Mr. McAdams?
Mr. Mayor, we'd move to approve Resolution 2014-68.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Now I'll ask the city attorney to read the title.
Resolution making findings of fact by the city council of the city of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the city of the city of Commerce City of the property commonly known as parcel 1723-00000272 West, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-228-14.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'll ask for a motion to introduce annexation ordinance AN 228-14. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance AN-228-14.
Mr. Douglas?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, commonly known as parcel 1723-00000272 West, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that AN 228-14 is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Next, I need a motion to approve the resolution making findings of fact for annexation AN-229-14. Councilman Benson, would you like to make that motion, please?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the resolution. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Resolution making findings of fact by the city council of the city of Commerce City and its conclusions relative to eligibility of annexation to the city of Commerce City of property commonly known as parcel 1723-00000272 East, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-229-14.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'll now ask for a motion to introduce annexation ordinance AN 229-14. Mr. Amador?
So moved to introduce AN 229-14.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
If I have to. All right. An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, commonly known as parcel 1723-00000272 East, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll now ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that ordinance AN 229-14 is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Now I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on zoning ordinance Z-906-14. Mr. Bullock?
We haven't done that public hearing yet, sir.
It's a zoning ordinance. It's not a public hearing, and we just did the public hearings on the annexation. This is the zoning.
Move to introduce zoning 906-14 ordinance.
Thank you.
You need the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission first.
That's it. Findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on the zoning of Z-906-14.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'll ask for a motion to introduce zoning ordinance Z-906-14. Councilwoman Carson?
Move to introduce ordinance 906-14.
Mr. Teeter?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second for the introduction of zoning ordinance Z-906-14. Will the city attorney please read the title?
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, for rezoning to PUD Zone District and approving a PUD Zone document for the properties described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, commonly known as parcels 1723-0000075, generally located south of East 104th Avenue between Potomac Street and Chambers Road, and parcel 1723-00000272, generally located south of 104th Avenue and east of Himalaya Street, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that zoning ordinance Z-906-14 has been introduced unanimously by the council this evening. I think that takes care of Excel's public hearings this evening, and I'd like to thank Preston and Excel for following through with the commitment on the conditional use permit. All right, we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now I'm gonna go ahead and open the next public hearing, which is the Randev Annexation and the associated zoning and subdividing. I would now call staff forward to make their case. Well, before I have you proceed, I'm gonna go ahead and follow the diorama that I have, and I'll ask the attorney. The public hearing is now open. I'll ask the city attorney to please ask you some questions.
Thank you.
You bet.
I shut it off. Mr. Draper, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Jared Draper. Work address is 7887 East 60th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022.
And your current position?
City planner.
And are you familiar with the case?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Has the city council adopted a plan which will govern the property proposed to be annexed tonight?
Yes.
Is at least one-sixth of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city of Commerce City?
Yes, ma'am.
Will any land held in identical ownership be separated or divided by this annexation without the written consent of the owner?
No, ma'am.
Is any land that is 20 acres or more in size and which has an assessed value in excess of $20,000 for ad valorem tax purposes been included within the territory proposed to be annexed without the written consent of the landowner?
No.
Have any other municipalities commenced annexation proceedings on the property?
No, ma'am.
And will the proposed annexation result in the area being detached from any school district?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. No further questions, sir.
Thank you. Staff may proceed with the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, tonight we'll be combining a number of cases. First, we'll discuss the annexation case 231-14, as well as a subdivision case 613-14, and a zoning case for newly annexed land Z-909-14. The location is 10730 Potomac Street. The applicant is Hitu Parmar. He's representing the property owners. And the requests before you tonight are the three that I mentioned: the annexation of an existing parcel, the subdivision of that existing parcel into two lots, and finally, the rezoning from Adams County to R1 and to Ag. These are the cases that we mentioned tonight. The site is located just to the north of East 104th Avenue along Potomac Street. It's currently zoned unincorporated Adams County, A3 within the county. It is surrounded by a number of residential communities, including neighborhoods of North Range Village and Potomac Farms, as well as part of the reunion plan unit development. The future land use for the subject property is residential medium, which, as you can see from our comprehensive plan future land use map, is the exact same as all of the properties that surround it for the residential medium, which does allow for single-family detached homes, as well as a little bit more density if it was requested. The existing use of the property, currently the property is one single parcel within the county and is a owner-occupied, single-family detached home. Just take a quick look at the street view. This is from Potomac. This is right before the road turns to dirt going to the north along Potomac Street. For case history, previously for the subject property, there were three requests: an annexation, a zoning, as well as a subdivision for a proposed church. That was in 2007. However, all three of those cases were denied due to incompatible uses with the surrounding property. The request was to be zoned C1 from unincorporated Adams County. The proposed annexation map, currently the parcel is 2.5 acres. However, through the annexation subdivision process, there will be dedicated right-of-way for Potomac and East 108th Avenue. So it will shrink a little bit, but currently that single parcel is 2.5 acres. Taking a look at the proposed subdivision plat, it will be divided into Lot 1 and Lot 2. It is important to note that Lot 1 is to the south. That's where the existing single-family detached home is, and to the north is currently open space. Lot 1, the request is for an R1 Zone District, which would be compliant and in alignment with our Land Development Code for the single-family home that's currently there. And then the agricultural zone district would be to the north on Lot 2. Taking a look at those standards, again, Lot 1 to the south where the existing single-family home is, the requested zone district is R1. There is a lot area minimum of 7,000 square feet and a maximum of 43,560 square feet, which is one acre. So for the R1 Zone District, there is a maximum lot area of one acre. The proposed lot area for R1 is 26,352, so it meets the minimum and the maximums, and there is a minimum lot frontage of 60 feet without a maximum, and that proposed lot frontage is 191 linear feet. For Lot 2, this is the lot to the north, currently is vacant, unoccupied. The requested zone district is agricultural. The minimum lot area for our agricultural zone district within the Land Development Code is one acre, and there's not a maximum size for the agricultural zone district. Due to the minimum size, the requested zone district is the agricultural zone district because the proposed lot area is just over that 43,560 square feet. The minimum lot frontage for an agricultural zone district is 100 feet, and the proposed lot frontage along Potomac is 294 linear feet. They do also meet the lot frontage along the future East 108th Avenue, which will be on the north side of that property. The annexation approval criteria, the proposed annexation is compliance with all state laws and the Land Development Code. It would be in the best interest of the city. The best interest of the city would be served. This property is within the municipal service area. It's capable of being integrated into the city in compliance with all applicable regulations. There are adequate services and facilities available, as well as the configuration will not limit the city's ability to annex any surrounding lands. The subdivision approval criteria, the requested subdivision before you tonight is consistent with the requested zoning application for the R1 and agricultural zone district. There's no evidence that the plat violates any laws or regulations. It does comply with all the applicable city standards. There's adequate utilities available. Right-of-way dedication of both Potomac and East 108th Avenue are part of the subdivision request and final subdivision plat, and a public improvement agreement will be executed before the plat can be recorded with the county. Finally, the criteria for zoning of newly annexed land. Lot 1 to the south, which is the R1 proposed lot, is most comparable to the present use of the property since it is currently a single-family detached home. And Lot 2 to the north, the agricultural zone district requested, is most comparable to the county's zoning classification on the existing subject property, which is A3 within the county. The Planning Commission analysis, I do want to note that Planning Commission did not hear the annexation cases before you tonight, but they did hear both the zoning and subdivision requests. Their analysis proved to show that the proposed plat did meet the subdivision approval criteria, that the important right-of-way along Potomac, as well as East 108th Avenue, will be dedicated to the city as part of these requests. Adequate services for the newly annexed land are available. Proposed zone districts meet the criteria for the zoning of newly annexed land, and finally, that the current use of the property will continue as a legal and conforming use under the R1 Zone District to the south, as well as the Ag Zone District to the north. As of today, June 2nd, staff has received one inquiry about the annexation, subdivision, and zoning applications. It was the same inquiry that the resident showed up for the Planning Commission hearing to gather additional information about the case and the applications before you. The resident, staff would like to note that the resident didn't speak in favor or opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing. The recommendations for tonight, first, the development review team is recommending approval of the requested annexation AN 231-14 based upon the annexation approval criteria, and the Planning Commission recommendations on May 6, 2014, held a public hearing, took testimony, and voted unanimously to forward the final subdivision and zoning of newly annexed land requests to city council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the finding of facts. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff will be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of the staff at this time? Seeing no one, let's see, I'm gonna invite the applicant forward to add any additional information and/or answer any questions.
Good evening. My name is Hitu Parmar. I'm representing the owners of the property, Mr. and Ms. Randev, at 10730 Potomac Street. I think staff has covered everything that needed to be addressed, and we're open to any questions you might have.
Great. Is there any questions from the council to the applicant? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. I should have had this question to staff. Do you plan on putting in a sidewalk and curb and gutter along the side there?
Yes.
Okay. And then, is there an access, what's it, 33 by 58 on the property from Potomac And then, is there an access, what's it, 33 by 58 on the property from Potomac? Is that, so there's no access to 108th, correct?
Not currently. Without 108th being built out, I don't believe that there's access right now. There is a shared access on the proposed subdivision plat for both the north and the south lot to meet our standards for entering and exiting Potomac Street.
How's 108th plan on going east?
It will at some point, at some future date.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in this matter before the council? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the hearing in which required an agenda modification.
That's right.
So the...
So you want to move the resolution? You want to do an amendment to the agenda to move the resolution in front of the annexation? Is that correct?
No, I want to move the resolution approving the subdivision plat, the very last one, above the zoning ordinance. So Resolution 2014-47 would come before Z909-14.
2014-47 is going to come before which one?
So you do...
You know what? I already have that right in my agenda to ask, to approve the Resolution 2014-47 before we go to the Z909-14.
I think it's right in your script, but I'm not sure.
It's not right on the agenda?
That's, that's what I'm saying.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Then I would ask the council for a motion to amend the agenda to move Resolution 214-47 up in front of ordinance Z909-14.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we'll hear the resolution before we hear the ordinance. All right. We got that straight, right? Now I can continue?
Thank you, sir.
Yep, no problem. All right, now I need a motion to approve the resolution making findings of fact on annexation AN-227-14. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution making findings of fact.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The resolution is the one for AN-231-14?
I have AN227-14. That's also, that's a public service one.
Yeah.
Right, that was the first annexation tonight.
Then it's wrong here. What is the number?
It's AN231-14.
Dash 14, all right. AN now. I want to redo this to make sure it's right on the record. Mr. Bullock, I need a motion on AN231-14.
Move to introduce ordinance...
Resolution.
Resolution for findings on AN231-14.
Thank you. Mr. McAldonny?
If I could just clarify and then make a second, shouldn't we be speaking the fact that we're moving to approve facts and findings on Resolution 2014-70? That's the name of the item. It's in support of AN231-14.
Gotcha. And I don't have that on here as well.
I don't have that on here.
It's in the...
Right. No, it's, yeah, but it's, it's different on our other stuff.
Yep.
So it is Resolution 2014-70, making findings of fact on AN231-14, correct?
If the motion maker will accept that amendment, then I will...
You get with that, Renee?
Yes.
Then second?
Then I have a motion and a second. Now you want to read the title, please? Thank you.
And so we're all clear. It's Resolution 2014-70, Resolution Making Findings of Fact by the City Council of the City of Commerce City in its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of property located at 10730 Potomac Street, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN231-14.
Yep, got it. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to introduce annexation ordinance AN231-14. Mr. McAldonny?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would the attorney please read the title?
An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, located at 10730 Potomac Street, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. Now I ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the introduction of AN231-14 has been introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Now I need a motion to approve Resolution 2014-47. Mr. McAldonny?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution approving subdivision plat in Case S-613-14.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to accept findings and recommendations of the planning commission on the zoning of ordinance Z909-14. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that. I mean, I'll make that motion for Z909-14.
Okay, findings of, findings and recommendations. Councilman Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need an introduction to the zoning ordinance Z909-14. Mr. Douglas?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to introduce zoning ordinance Z909-14. Would the city attorney please read that title?
An ordinance rezoning Lot 1 from Adams County A3 to Commerce City R1 Zone District, and Lot 2 from Adams County A3 to Commerce City AG, for the properties described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made a part hereof, located at 10730 Potomac Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said zoning.
Thank you. I'll now ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that ordinance Z909-14 has been introduced unanimously by the city council this evening, and I would like now to welcome Gerinder and his wife to Commerce City. Thank you. Now we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 2014-63. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this resolution? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAldonny?
Mr. Mayor, we move to approve Resolution 2014-63.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one. City attorney, please read the title.
Resolution consenting to participation by the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium in the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we have ordinances on first reading. 2008, Mr. McCluskey was here and did give me a check. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this matter before moving forward? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion on ordinance 2008 on first reading. Mr. McAldonny?
Mr. Mayor, we move to introduce ordinance 2008 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would the city attorney please read that title?
An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the E470 Transportation Safety Foundation grant in the amount of $2,500 for a day at the Commerce City Police Department program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. And now, open for a roll call vote. Please let the record show, the ordinance 2008 has been introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now we move on to ordinance 2009. Does anyone on council have any questions on this ordinance? Seeing no one. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
You'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance 2009?
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $5,000 to be used for Buffalo Run Golf Course sand bunker flood repairs and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll now ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that ordinance 2009 has been introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Now we move on to ordinance 2010. Anyone on council have any questions on this ordinance? Mr. Bullock?
For an introduction.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, anyone in the audience have any, would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one, Mr. Bullock, go right ahead.
Move to...
Move to introduce, introduce ordinance 2010. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2010. Would the city attorney please read the title?
An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Adams County Open Space Grant in the amount of $345,500 to be used for Sand Creek Trail flood repairs and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2010 has been introduced this evening unanimously by the city council. Now I'll move into administrative council business. Is there any administrative council business to be brought forward by the city council? Mr. Bullock?
Aligning with the Colorado Veterans Forum and the Veterans Forum of Metro Denver, they're having a veterans' ride on June 21st that's going to start in Lakewood and end up in Aurora, and it's a motorcycle ride. And Commerce City, they've been asking Commerce City to become part of the Colorado Veterans Forum, and they want to have the riders come through Commerce City and do a stop here, and preferably it was going to be either at the Civic Center here or Pioneer Park. And I was just wondering if the members of council would like to be a part of, this is a request I've brought forth before, be a part of the Colorado Veterans Forum, but be a part of this ride on the 21st of June. And it's going to end up in Aurora. It, basically Fitzsimmons is retired enlisted men's association, and that's where they're going to have a big cookout and everything. But it starts, I think, at nine o'clock in Lakewood, and they ride here to Commerce City if we're going to be a part of it. Then they ride to out south, and then they end up in Aurora at the very end.
What are the costs of participation?
That's a good question. It's, they're asking for voluntary donations from different cities, and Lakewood and Aurora have donated $1,000 apiece for this ride and to keep the Veterans Forum going. But whatever Commerce City could contribute, they would like to...
Hey, council, have any questions for Mr. Bullock on this proposed ride? No? No? You, I'm going to ask, Jim, I think this has to be done if there's any appropriations. I need a motion and some, some idea of what the donation would be by the council, correct, to move forward to accept the participation?
I would like to just ask for a donation from Commerce City of $500 for our part in the donation, and I can give you it, the studies, before the study session next week. I actually have pamphlets that I brought and forgot, so I didn't really bring them because they're sitting right on the counter at home, but you would have had a lot more information if I hadn't have forgotten them. And, but I will get all the information to the council before next Monday, you know. But because the ride's on the 21st, and the 16th is our next official meeting, I was wondering if, but I'm going to wait and find out what council would like to do, because I know if it was me and somebody said, "I will gladly pay you this next week for some information you haven't given me," I might be weary of it. But it's a legitimate thing, and I will get the information to council. I'm sorry for my failure to bring the information forward.
All right, so Mr. Bullock's requesting $500 donation and to participate in this ride. What are the desires of the council? I'm open for a motion.
Or no motion?
I don't have no lights lit up. It's not lit up here. I don't see anything here at all, so I've been just kind of flying by the seat of my pants tonight calling on all of you. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Benson, Mr. Douglas? I have a second. I have a motion and a second to allow participation and $500 donation for this veterans' ride. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And that is with the guarantee that Mr. Bullock will not forget the information that he has promised this council on the 16th.
I will have the information for you before then. It'll be in everybody's box this week. I will bring it up tomorrow.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, we already did that. It's done. Thank you. I just, I had one of those brain laps, Jim. It's okay. All right, any other administrative council business? Crystal? Crystal, and remember, I can't, I'm not getting any lights lit up here. Crystal, yeah, just do that wave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to encourage our residents out there that are not only in the audience but watching on TV at home, to attend our second public meeting regarding the outdoor park, pool, I should say, water park. Tomorrow night, excuse me, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, it's at the senior lobby of the Commerce City Recreation Center, 660 East Parkway Drive. I encourage our residents to attend. This is something that we've promoted for several months with the ballot initiative, and now, just looking at the plans, everything's coming together, and it's very exciting. But I really think that with this last meeting that we had, we had a little less of a turnout than anticipated. So at this point, I would really encourage you, or tell your friends, or friend of a friend, or the neighbor down the street, to attend. We really do need that, that last bit of voter input as far as what they would like to see in the, in the water park. And this was a meeting that I had attended myself and Councilmember Bullock and Councilmember Douglas as well. We, we had made some suggestions and were hoping that they are, they, the firm that was chosen to design this particular park, there were some very strong suggestions, very strong feelings about this, and I can probably speak for my colleagues to a certain extent that there are some things that we, we are concerned about, and so I really would like to see citizen input tomorrow evening. I will be there. I encourage all of my colleagues to attend as well, if at all possible. And that was it.
Thank you. Any other administrative business? Seeing none, we'll move into reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email...
We did distribute via email this week's edition of the City Manager Update. It's fairly brief, so I'll simply call your attention to it and invite any questions you may have about the report. Thank you.
Thank you. And acting city attorney?
Uh, no reports, Mr. Mayor.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure.
Not even a title or something?
I got nothing.
All right. All right. I'll give my report. I'll try to be brief. First and foremost, I need to thank Mayor Protem Bullock for taking care of the, running of the meeting at the last city council meeting as I was out of town. I heard it went pretty well. For the most part, it went well, huh?
I don't understand how this meeting can be shorter than my meeting. I'm, I'm.
You know what, Renee? That's why you're the interim and I am the regular. There's a difference there, okay? That's how that, that works. But thank you very much for, for being the interim. I, I was away on city business and was at the International Shopping Center Conference. I have to tell you all that our economic development team did an outstanding job while we were out there. We did have a dinner with all of our developers in the, in the community that, that could make it. The prospects that we met with while we were out there, many were hotels, restaurants, things of that nature, all things that are desirable for development within our community. And we were supportive of our developers and their properties that have the proper zoning for these type of things to go into. So we met with, with numerous restaurants and hotel venues were our primary focus this year. I do expect that you'll all see some of the benefits over the next year of that particular conference. It was very, I was there for three days. It was, it was all work, very busy. And the flight was not that great because we were delayed going and coming. So it was taken care of. I know that the economic development team will have a full report of all the things and activities that we did while we were out there. And I'm looking forward to, to helping them with that when they come to the council and brief you all on our activities. So thank you to the residents and the council for allowing me to participate and try to get some more business to come to Commerce City. We also had, when I got back, some, some rain. And I know there's some residents probably at home watching. And for those that are here tonight, I spent, I got home on Tuesday. Wednesday, we had the annual employee barbecue. Of course, it was brought indoors over at the rec center and several council members also attended. However, as soon as I, I was leaving the rec center, it started to rain with some of these thunderstorms. Wasn't anything that we weren't used to. It was just a normal spring thunderstorms. And I know we had one the previous day while I was out of town. But that evening, I started getting calls at four o'clock about Fairfax Park and concerns about Fairfax Park. So I did contact the city manager. He did send some folks out there to talk to these residents that had concerns with Fairfax Park because it was getting so full. I then myself went to, went out to Fairfax Park, looked at the situation and noticed that one of the flap gates was not working properly and water was coming up out of an inlet across the street from Fairfax, which was potentially had, had the ability to impact a home. I then went, had, had some dinner with my wife and came back to Fairfax around 10:00 PM, met with Sam Hoover, Superintendent of Public Works, and talked to him about Fairfax Park and what we were going to do to make sure that there was no impact to any of the surrounding homes. At that time, Mr. Hoover told me that they were bringing, matter of fact, that evening while I was there, the fire department showed up because there were no pumps in the area. I guess the pumps that we would normally rent were down to the north of Commerce City in, in that Lyons area still from the flooding from last September. Fire department showed up and thank you very much to the fire department. They brought their trucks in and started to pump water out of Fairfax into the ditch across the street to help alleviate some of the, the impact on Fairfax. What I did notice is, is that in a normal storm, that's not how Fairfax normally acts after growing up in this community. So I have asked staff to put together an assessment of where some of these additional flows are coming from because a storm of that magnitude should not have done, impacted our community of that, of that magnitude. So we do know that the state was pumping off of Highway 85 into Fairfax. We do know that Havana Pond out on the arsenal still has not been repaired, but they're in the process of, of getting that repaired. And we know Denver flows hit that Havana Pond. We also had flooding along Tower. And so what I asked for was an assessment of what this council needs to do so that I can, I can ask the council for the, the necessary money once the assessment's done to make sure we take care of Fairfax Park and whether it's the outfall pipe, whether it's making sure that our public works department has pumps. But I think my biggest concern after growing up here, to have a storm of that, of that minor of a storm, it was, it was a decent storm, but it wasn't that, oh my gosh, we're going to flood type of storm after growing up here. Wasn't like last September. That I think that assessment will be very helpful to determine whether it's an immediate situation, we need to work on this outfall. But I noticed that we're getting a lot of flows that we didn't have before and there's no new development in the direction of these flows from our city. And so based on these flows, if they're coming from other jurisdictions, we need to be aware so that we can make the proper connections with the parties that would be involved that, that are producing these flows. But somehow, we need to make sure we mitigate the problem. And so for those folks that are here and at home, we're not taking this lightly. I was out there all afternoon and into the evening to make sure that, that Fairfax was being taken care of. However, there's some additional information this council needs to know because there are flows coming into this community that we haven't had before and we don't quite know where they're coming from. So I just wanted to assure, assure the public that we do understand what the situation is. We are making sure that the public works department has pumps available for rent to make sure that any, any storms that are coming up in the next couple of months, while they're doing the assessment, we can make sure that we can pump Fairfax and make sure that everybody is safe. We shouldn't have, we shouldn't have a problem like that unless it's, unless it's that thousand year type of situation we saw last September. It shouldn't have happened over the last, the few storms that we had. But I do want to thank the staff and, and the team for being on their toes and making sure that they got in there, got things pumped and made sure that the community was safe regardless of this assessment. So just so everybody knows, staff's working on it and, and I am looking forward to hearing the findings of that assessment.
Did it, the flap fix?
I don't know if they got the flap fixed yet or not, but I know it was high on their priority list to take care of. And, and you know, what, what happens is when that flap's not working right, it really takes away about three feet of storage of Fairfax because it's pumping out through the inlet across the street. So it does affect our storage as well as have potential impact on homes. And over the years, the amount of times we've heard about Fairfax and with the amount of effort and money and, and staff time we've, we've put into Fairfax over the last couple of years, we want to make sure it's working properly. So I just want the public to know that we are aware of it and we are working towards finding a solution and sooner than later. But I'm waiting to hear from Public Works and our staff on, on what this council needs to do to make sure that we get it permanently taken care of. Then we had myself and the Mayor Protem went to a meeting out at the Refuge involving Secretary Jewell, Secretary of the Interior. And we, there was some tree planting and, and there was a tornado warning and there was all kinds of stuff that happened that day as well while we were out there. However, it was nice to meet the, the new Secretary of the Interior. She's from the corporate world with REI and we talked to her a little bit about our needs for the 915 acres, 917 acres, whatever it is. Then we had the Stout Street Golf Tournament, myself and Mr. Douglas and Mr. Teeter. And we had one employee was Chris Kramer. We went out and participated in that. And then, of course, the Memorial Day Parade 50th Anniversary. And I personally want to thank all of the staff that, that volunteers and puts in a lot of extra time. I want to thank Crystal and Steve for all the efforts of helping to put together the 50th Anniversary. I noticed, you know, some of the new stuff that was done with the banner over, over Parkway and things of that nature. It was a great parade, biggest yet. And, you know, I thought it was really impressive that the Seek Temple, they, they came out and handed out over 6,000 bottles of water to all the patrons that were along the parade route. And unfortunately, the crash that took place out of Jefferson County, or not Jefferson County, out of Front Range Airport the other morning, was two of the members of the temple, of the Seek Temple, died in that crash. So our condolences to, to those folks. But I did get a call, Saturday, I believe it was, on, on the crash and the fact that they were involved. And they actually had a program scheduled for Adam City High School. I think it was last Saturday, that evening. And one of the musicians was in that plane crash and died. So they canceled that program at Adam City High School. But I know their intent is to reorganize that and have it at a later date. So thank you to them and condolences to them as well. I have no further report. If anybody has anything they'd like to add to my report, now is the time to do so. Seeing no one. Before I close the, the meeting, we do have an executive session. I would like to ask the city attorney to please read the information she needs to read and I'll ask the council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe what you're looking for is an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E for the purpose of instructing negotiator, for the purpose of instructing negotiators concerning matters related to the Denver International Airport IGAs.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Did you get that for the record, Laura? Mr. Bullock, Mr. McAdonick? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. And then after that executive session, I'll come back out and close the meeting, correct? All right. Laura, do you need me to sign anything before I go to the executive session or do you want? Perfect. I'll wait here for a minute. Thank you all for being here tonight.
I guess I never got to, I never saw the executive session.
You never what? Renee?[1375.91]